Okay, it's 12:10. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. This is a meeting of the Assembly Budget and Finance Committee of the Hole. It is Thursday, November 19th, 12:10 PM, and we're noticed for one hour. We'll go ahead and get started here with introductions. Ms. Camacho, would you call the role, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Allard.
Here.
Mr. Constant. Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy. Ms. LaFrance.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Presverdia. Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Weddleton. And Ms. Alatell.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. I just want to note that the documents for this meeting, including the agenda, are available online for members of the public. If you go to muni.org, click on Assembly, and then on the left, click on Committees, and then you can scroll down to the Budget and Finance Committee of the Hole webpage. The agenda is there along with several other documents. Thank you, Ms. Camacho, for posting those, including a couple Budget Advisory Commission resolutions that we had at Tuesday's meeting, the Revenue Status Report for the month, and then also the resolution concerning the State of Alaska Funding of School Bond Debt, the Joint Resolution with the Matsueboro. So we'll go ahead and get started with new business. Actually, let me just pause for a moment and ask if anyone has anything that they wanted to add to the agenda for the meeting. Okay, thanks. And do please put yourselves in the chat or text me if you want to get in the queue. I am taking this meeting from my iPad, so apologies if there's any delay with recognizing you. Just raise your hand or if I don't get to you soon enough. So first item, report from the Budget Advisory Commission. And I will just note that there has been a leadership change, and many thanks to the outgoing Chair, Nolan Clouda, and welcome to Alyssa Rodriguez, the new Chair. And I also wanted to thank the members of the Budget Advisory Commission for their hard work on the budget and for the resolutions that they provided us, one concerning the alcohol tax and then on the budget. So thank you so very much for all your hard work. We very much appreciate it. Ms. Rodriguez, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you.
Great. Well, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. And we have Nolan Clouda on the phone. We were going to kind of tag team and do a little handoff here. Nolan, do you want to jump on?
Sure, sure. Yes, thanks, Alyssa, and thank you, Madam Chair. So Nolan Clouda, and I'm outgoing Chair of the Budget Advisory Commission. And at our last meeting, we did those elections, and Alyssa has been Vice Chair for, I think, for the last two years, the whole time I've been Chair. And so she's going to be very well-versed in all of our issues, and she's presented to this group as well. So Alyssa's going to be able to do a great job. Our, you know, big items of business, we did have a couple of work sessions as well as our regular meeting earlier this month, and we did pass our resolution on the 2021 budget. You know, we liked the version of it, you know, presented to us. We had, you know, done our deep dives into departments at the municipality, including the largest, you know, including most of the largest departments like police and fire. You know, each of us had met with department heads and had spent several months looking at the kind of shape of those budgets in general. You know, we did note that this last budget is, you know, in real terms, adjusted for inflation, is a bit even smaller than last year's budget. And also, the capital budget is a bit smaller as well. So, you know, we thought that that was important to note. And we passed a resolution as well on the alcohol tax proceeds. What our take on that was, you know, we had been a part of that process for a while and had been, you know, briefed with several of the nonprofits and the coalition of partners that had developed the recommendations there. Our take was that there had been some really fantastic work done, and we were very happy with the version of it that we saw as far as where it puts resources into a mix of, you know, responding to alcohol-related, mental health-related issues as well as, you know, proactively addressing some of them. So we are certainly very pleased with how that has gone. We are planning for a strategic planning session sometime in January. You know, that's been our standard ritual for the last several years is to do a January deep dive and spend some time plotting our course over the next year. So that will be our take this time. And, you know, with that, it's been a real pleasure to be the Chair the last two years. It's definitely good to have some rotation. Alyssa is a really fantastic person, and she is an economist as well. And I've known and worked with her for a long time, and she's going to be able to do a great job. I'm always happy to be a resource for the Assembly and happy to continue to participate on the Budget Advisory Commission. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Alyssa?
Thanks, Nolan. I appreciate that. I am very excited about being elected Chair, very excited for where we're going. And I wanted to thank Nolan for all that he's done. And I actually had a conversation with our new Vice Chair, Jonathan King, and he and I were both commenting on how pleased we are with the direction that the Budget Advisory Commission is going, thanks to your leadership, Nolan. So we plan to continue a lot of what we doing. And I don't want to, you know, speak before our strategy session, but we are both very excited to have that upcoming and to be looking at where do we want to go and how do we want to build upon the good work that's been done. So, thank you. And if anyone has any questions for me, I would love and welcome that folks reach out at any point. So, thank you very much.
Thank you both for your service. I think that the Commission has really distinguished itself with its level of involvement and activity, and we're, I know, very grateful for all that you've done. It looks like we've got, Mr. Peterson, do you have a comment?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just thanking Nolan for his good work over the last two years. It's community service, and greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Well, thank you both, Nolan and Alyssa, for joining and for your service, and we look forward to further collaboration ahead. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to the second item, Item B, under New Business on Our Agenda, CARES Act Funding Coronavirus Relief Fund. Is there anyone from the Administration who would like to speak to this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Alex Slupka, Chief Fiscal Officer. I would just like to briefly remind everybody, we gave a pretty thorough update on Monday at the work session related to this, so I'm not going to repeat that, but I could answer any questions that may have arisen out of that. I would like to mention that we did receive yesterday the second payment from the state of 19.9 million. So we are on track. We expect to provide application for the final payment sometime in early December. So we are on track to receive all the money, and we are working very diligently to spend all the money. I do want to give you a heads up that we may come to the Assembly with more of a bookkeeping type of resolution, that some of the money that got moved into the General Fund may need to be moved back into the CARES Grant to be spent there and vice versa. Some of the goals that were laid out for spending in the CARES Grant might not get done in time, and we may have to move those into the 101. So just a heads up that once we get, we only want to do it once. We want to capture everything, and we will probably bring that to you in December. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slupka. Do members have any questions? I don't see anyone in the chat. Great. So we will go ahead and move on to the next item, which is C, Update on 2020 Budget. Mr. Wilbur.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will give you an update on where we are on the 2020 budget. So we are finalizing our third quarter expenditure report that we give to the Assembly. That will include the month of September. We were working to get some final information from departments. The entire document will be available to you at your December 8th meeting, but if I could just take a couple moments to highlight where we are at this point. At the end of September, we are 75% through the end of the year. And at that point, we'd only spent about 66% of our budget. But when we include the amount that we've encumbered, set aside that we anticipate to expend, it'll be closer to 70. I do think these numbers are going to get closer to the percent of the year, and I'll explain that in a minute. We moved a lot of our operational expenses into the Emergency Fund, and we're going to make some changes to move those back into the operating budget as a result of those things being eligible. So I think the third quarter report for general government is going to look pretty good on the expenditure side. But as we make some changes based on some information we've received from FEMA, some of the things that we thought we had originally budgeted in the operating budget, and then we moved those expenses to the Emergency Fund, we're going to have to move them back out and back into the operating fund where we originally had them budgeted. So I think as the last quarter of the year comes in, we look at the October report, and then November, and then the year-end, you'll see some transitions there. I think Mr. Slupka mentioned some of the things that we're looking at that we're going to need to make a change. So we're going to be moving some of our, again, funds into the, that were originally put in the Emergency Fund, mostly for straight time labor that we had thought might get reimbursable, but we'll move those back into the operating budget where they were originally set. We'll also expect that we're going to have to have a little bit more leave cash out, projecting forward. You know, during COVID, there were a lot of folks that were not able to take leave, and we budget a certain amount of leave cash out to departments. But when the individuals are not able to take that leave, they then cash it out. So we do expect a little bit more of that in departments, more than we're seeing right now. So I think we'll see a bump in October, and we'll likely see a bump at year-end. Just as a heads up, as future quarter, the reports are coming in. And then, I guess, when you see this report, what you'll see, if we have any departments that are more than 5% over or 5% under, we highlight those. You will see a lot of highlights for departments that are under, but I do want to point out a couple departments that I know that are over, and we're keeping an eye on those. I mentioned this last month, we do expect the Fire Department to be a little bit over. I think a lot of that's going to be doing to a lot of leave cash in. Maintenance and Operations, when you see the report, it's going to look like they're running hot, but they're not. And the reason it looks like they're going to be spending over the percentages, remember, the debt that we pay in the road bonds is in their department, and we then have made those debt expenditures in the quarter. So we're basically met 99% of that required expenditure. So it's going to look overall like Maintenance and Operations is at 80%. But again, most of that is in the debt. So we also had a little bit going over in the Police Department, and that has to do with some overtime and some, had a lot of call-outs and some other investigation-type work that they were doing. So we do expect them to be running a little bit over. I think many of you may have received some information that the Police Department's towing contract was running a little light. We worked with the Police Department earlier this week. We got them squared away with that, so we're able to get the towing contractor back in business. They'll be able to help Maintenance and Operations and Code Enforcement and APD. So we're back on track there as well till the end of the year. And I think the last thing I want to mention when you see the report is, we also, in the quarter of the report, identify where we have a lot of overtime. And so, you know, those departments that have a lot of overtime, and you'll recognize them. The Assembly, and I think a lot of that has to do with some early election-type work that they've done in preparation. The other ones are going to be in Finance, in Fire, in Health, in my department, and then in the Police Department. So it's just a matter of the time of year. When you see those, it's really nothing out of the ordinary. I think the Health Department is probably the most out of the ordinary right now. And I have to just say my compliments to Ms. Harris and Ms. Fetco and the whole team at the Health Department. They are really helping myself and Alex get the expenses worked away for those that are COVID-related. And one of the things in their budget-to-actuals for this, I know they're going to be a little behind, so we are doing what we can to support them. I think overall, we're looking on a pretty good path. I don't see the unexpected surprises that I hadn't already mentioned. And so I think those are the highlights, but please look forward to the third quarter report on your December meeting. And if you have any questions, I'll look forward to hearing from them. And if you have any questions until then, please reach out to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Do members have any questions or comments at this point? Okay, I don't see anybody, so we'll go on to Item D, which probably we could remove. Update on 2021 Budget. Mr. Wilbur, did you have anything you wanted to add after our meeting on Tuesday?
I just want to add that, you know, the budget is already loaded. With the implementation of SAP, what, three to four days to get a budget loaded after the Assembly approved it. It's already been loaded. We noted a message to directors, so they can see it already. Can't use it until January 1st, but we were able to put that together. So we're ready to go from January 1. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that update. And I don't see anyone in the chat on this item, so we will go ahead and move on to Item E, under New Business, MOA Financial Status. Mr. Slupka.
The financial status is good. I will just share what I shared earlier, that we are today issuing 65 million in bonds for the port. So that project continues on budget and is such a critical piece of infrastructure, both for the municipality as well as the state. So that is doing well. I would also add that, you know, I would want to mention that a lot of the work that Lance mentioned relative to pay and movement of pay is being done by Alden Thurn, who did tremendous work as well in support of the MLMP transaction. So we are thrilled to be able to have his continued expertise as we navigate the very difficult waters of FEMA. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Moore to talk about revenue, and he can also deal with the impact of COVID. Dan?
Okay, thanks, Alex, and Madam Chair and Committee. This is Dan Moore, the City Treasurer. I'll just summarize here where we are at with revenues as of just yesterday. So with revenues, and this, just so you know, the details of this will come to the Assembly at your December 8th meeting, and that'll include the normal data that you get each month, but also the quarterly graphs, because we just finished finding out about third quarter for certain types of taxes. So overall, the projected revenue shortfall, and it's been a shortfall all year long, is around $23 million. It's just a hair over that. In the past, I think, early on, it ranged from 16 to 18 million negative variance. However, a couple larger negative variances showed up in the last month, month and a half. That is in the area of ambulance service fees, and I think the Assembly's aware of that. That's a timing issue where the expected revenues just will not be coming in in year 2020. That was about a $3 million hit. And then the other area is municipal assistance. That came in lower than budgeted, and we were waiting for final confirmation on that, which we got about three or four weeks ago, I believe. So overall, negative revenue is a little over $23 million. To break it down and just summarize, and this gets into more of the COVID effects, the top two areas that are worst-hit in terms of revenues are room tax and rental vehicle tax. And that's due to, obviously, the lack of visitor and business travelers. Those two taxes actually did show a little bit of incremental improvement in the third quarter. So I think second quarter, they were down about 73% of what they would have been the year prior. But in third quarter, the room tax was down 68%, and then rental vehicle was down 60%. So there was a little bit of improvement in third quarter. The other tax, or I should say fees, that are COVID-related, that were negatively impacted by COVID, deal with, mostly with local residents and their use of services and their circulation around town. So those other negative revenue areas would include parks and rec fees, library fees, transit revenue, motor fuel tax, and motor vehicle registration tax. So if you add up all six of those areas that are all very much COVID-related, they account for about 75% of the $23 million negative revenue variance. The other 25% is a mixture of, is what I would call revenues that are much more likely to just vary plus or minus year to year. So those other revenues would include like investment revenues. That has been up and down month to month. The most recent update was a decline of about $300,000 for overall for the year. The investment earnings are expected to come in $1 million under budget, and that's just a result of what the market has been doing, and lower cash balances, lower yields. Those are all in response to COVID, trying to offset the pain that's been felt by residents and businesses. So, but property taxes does have about a $2 million variance. That would include both real and personal property tax. Marijuana is up about $1 million. It had been going up month after month, but it is pretty much plateaued at the moment. So we didn't see any additional upward climb in the most recent period. And then I already mentioned ambulance and municipal assistance. So those five areas are the biggest ones that net to the additional negative amount to get to the grand total of 23 million. So that's where we stand. We are going to be briefing the executive group. We do that on a monthly basis. We're going to do that later this afternoon. And so they'll get all the details of this when we meet with them. And then, like I said, we'll follow up and provide the standard report we do to the Assembly by your December 8th meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do members have any questions? I'm not seeing anyone in the chat. Just a general question to either you, Mr. Moore, or Mr. Slupka. Would one of you summarize the MOA's plan for closing this revenue gap?
I can do that. And that summation is pretty well-handled in the material that I delivered on Monday, which I'm happy to send out again, that we have moved, and I will pull up the report so I can make sure I speak to it accurately. I apologize for not having it open.
And we can get that report posted online, too, for members of the public. We'll...
Yeah, I think it's, it might be posted in relation to the work session that was held on Monday. But so, 73.586 million in public safety payroll expenses are being charged to the CARES Grant. That frees up those monies, the revenue that we received via taxes, to be used for other items. And so the other items that were delineated is we moved 19.4 million of programs to the General Fund, because we were not sure we could expend them under the CARES Grant in 2020. The revenue shortfall that Mr. Moore spoke of, and then the spending that the Assembly authorized for 12 and a half million. So if you do that math, you come out with a surplus on fund balance of 16.1 million. I caution you, as I did on Monday, that that is going to be more than completely offset by the expenditures that we have made and continue to make in relation to the COVID pandemic. We expect the spent but not yet reimbursed amount at the end of the year to approximate $25 million. And we expect that we will still have about 4 million left over from the earthquake, down from 9 million at the start of the year. When you do all that math, we end up with a fund balance deficit of roughly 13 million for the year. But from an operational expense, we are going to try and recover both of those sums, the 4 million and the 25 million, in 2021 through FEMA, and we are working diligently in all of those areas. And so hopefully, by the end of the year, by the end of 2021, we will have resolved, we will have resolved both these deficits in terms of FEMA recovery as well as this projected 23 million deficit for 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Slupka. I appreciate that summary. And for any members of the public who want to hear more, the work session was on Monday, November 16th, and that will also contain the presentation from that meeting. So, thank you. I don't see anyone in the chat for questions, so we'll go ahead and keep moving on. The next item is F, Update on Pay Audits. Ms. Marshall, do you have any updates?
Hi, this is, yeah, I do. Chief Information Technology Officer. I just wanted to remind everyone, the payroll audits, the goal is to review all payroll corrections submitted since we went live with SAP on 9/11/2017. And we're just double-checking that the payroll correction was completed without error and to provide the employees and the unions with a complete audit. We, from the last meeting, we've completed 22 additional audits. And at this moment, there are no red flags, nothing to alert the Assembly about. We are moving forward, and the team is working great. We are reducing, are not producing pay errors, which is great.
Thank you for that update, Ms. Marshall. That's great news, that there aren't any alerts, or you're not seeing the pay audits or the pay errors come through. So that's great news. Thank you. I don't see any members in the chat, so we will keep moving on. The next item, G, Joint Resolution with Matsueboro on the School Bond Debt Reimbursement. There's not really any action at this point for the Committee to take. If Mr. Rivera is on, perhaps he would like to speak to that. I understand this item will be on the December 8th agenda, and a copy of it is available on the Committee's webpage. Mr. Rivera, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies, actually.
Apologies, I actually just got your last couple of seconds there, I was on a phone call. But I'm going to assume that you did a great job summarizing what we have before us. So, the resolution was reviewed during the October joint meeting. I'm not exactly sure when the Matsuburu Assembly is going to be taking up the resolution, but they did assure me that they will. So, their body will take it up, our body will take it up, and we will send it to Juno once both of our bodies have hopefully approved the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. And actually, I hadn't summarized the resolution, the title of it, "A Joint Resolution of the Anchorage Assembly and the Matanuska Sissitna Borough Assembly in Favor of the State of Alaska Fully Funding School Bond Debt Reimbursement," again, is on the committee's webpage and will be before us on the meeting of December 8. So, does anybody have anything they want to add or any questions? Okay, I don't, oh, wait, somebody, hold on a sec. Ms. Allard.
It's me, Suzanne Jamie Allard. I have a question.
Thank you. Ms. Allard, you have the floor.
Sorry, did you hear me?
Yes, I did. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. So, when we send that letter with the Matsu, the resolution, this is going to Mr. Rivera to the legislature, is this coming from the full body, or is this something where assembly members could add or not have their name on it?
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yes, this is going to be a resolution that the assembly is going to be deliberating and voting on, on December 8. As is usual for any resolution, the assembly members can add their name or take off their name. Likely with this resolution, it's just going to be my name on it to begin with, and then other assembly members can add their name on to the resolution if they would like.
Thank you. Just one little follow-up, do we have, do you have any information on that currently that I could look at or anybody else that might want to, that I'm missing, that I haven't seen yet, or is this just something still in the works that you'll send out prior to? Just, I just want enough lead time is all.
Thank you. So, the resolution was part of the packet for the October joint meeting with the Matsuburu. So, what I will do is I will have the clerk's office send that packet out again, and the resolution will be included in that documentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Thank you, Ms. Allard. And the resolution is posted on this committee's webpage as well, if anyone wants to pull it up. Okay, seeing no one else in the chat, we'll go ahead and move on to item H, which is other business. Does anyone have any other issues or items they wish to raise? Okay, I don't see anybody or hearing or hear anyone. Number four, committee legislative and budget priorities. I don't have anything on the list for legislative priorities. My assumption would be, we would take a look at other committees' legislative priorities. For example, we just got out of the Enterprise Utility Oversight Committee meeting, and the port, funding of the port is one of the legislative priorities for that committee. Does anyone have anything they want to add at this time to the discussion on legislative Okay. B, budget items for 2021. I think we have extensively covered that and can probably let that one go until maybe fourth quarter revisions. That brings us to audience participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? If so, you can go ahead and unmute yourself by pressing star six, and please introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello? Hello?
Hi, Mr. Haberman.
Yeah, just be on one point that was on your agenda respectfully, and you can call him, and then, you know, at some point, I'm going to want to talk about a little in the valley too. And just one point, you mentioned about that joint resolution between Anchorage and the, and the Matsuburu. I hope when you do present that before your meeting, that it doesn't go what we call on the consent agenda, which limits public comment on it. I hope it's going to be part of a situation where you bring it as a item and go before the public at your meetings, at the, you know, put it as a public hearing, because that's a very important issue, and you do restrict a limited amount of time for public to comment when you put stuff on the consent agenda, and I would hope you refrain from doing that and move it to a place where the public can address it. And just in reference to what I just said, there is, there is been comments made when I say something like that, that the public has the chance to address you by way of email. Well, yes, people can address you by way of email, but, you know, your public meetings, please do not restrict the public in ways that you have so many items on that consent agenda, and now this one's cropping up as far as a joint resolution coming from two major bodies in the state. And so, I hope you address that and put it in a place where the public can be more engaging with you and not restrictive. Thank you very much, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman, for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? It sounds like someone may have just unmuted. We will go ahead then and move to adjournment, and before I ask for a motion to adjourn, thank you all for joining this call, especially to members of the Budget Advisory Commission and members of the administration, and I wish you all a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. And on that note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.